...to coordinate and make sure we get them off, okay. Can you hear me okay, Dan and Leslie?
Yes.
Yes, Dan.
Yeah.
Welcome to both of you. Thank you for joining us and we'll be calling this meeting to order and starting with asking if there's been any requests to speak from the public, Madam Secretary. We received any written communication from anybody? Good enough. So why don't we go ahead and start and we'll try to get you guys taken care of. Dan and Leslie out there first, but why don't we move, I'll entertain a motion for the first agenda item.
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So now the floor is yours. Dan and Leslie, you guys have the first update item.
I'd like to let Leslie begin. I have a limited vocal capacity because I've got a bad case of side to side and coughing, so I don't want to start my spell of coughing while we're trying to go through our agenda items.
Dan, no excuses.
That's right, that's right.
Man up.
Well, I will do my best to fill in for Dan here. And Dan, though, please chime in if I miss anything, but thought we would be, we could just start out by just talking a little bit about what's going on here, which I'd love to tell you it's a smooth operating system here, but it is definitely an interesting time. I know you've all probably been following along and have seen the House leadership debacle. And so I think at this point, really, it's a bit of an open game. You know, folks have been trying to heavily recruit Paul Ryan. The latest as of last week was that he would not do it unless the House Freedom Caucus fully supported him and endorsed him, which not sure that they will do. And so they continue their search for a leader. In the meantime, you know, a government shutdown was narrowly averted in September and they passed a continuing resolution or a CR through December 11th. The White House is meeting with both Senate and House leadership at this time to see if they can come up with some kind of budget deal that might even include, you know, some easing of the caps that we've seen, these draconian caps that we've seen in sequestration. See if they're able to be successful. It is obviously very challenging, but discussions are continuing right now. The other piece that I wanted to flag for you is that around the transportation reauthorization, service transportation reauthorization bill. On Friday, the House released their draft of the service transportation reauthorization bill. They're going to be marking that up later this week. And we're still in the process of reviewing it, but it looks like there are a number of provisions that are similar to the Senate-passed DRIVE Act. Their goal is to get something passed and to try to get this conference in December and actually try to get some kind of a longer-term bill passed in December. Much like the Senate's bill, they're going to end up only being able to do, they may do authorization around the policy for six years, but they're probably only going to be able to do funding for about three years. That's been the real struggle here. They will, the Highway Trust Fund expires October 29th, and so they will still have to do some kind of a short-term measure at least through December so that then they will have an opportunity to pass this longer-term bill. So we're watching that.
Leslie, real quickly, on the Highway Trust Fund, will that also be the funding for the total of three years as well? Is that what you're thinking?
So they'll do a short-term bill right now through December and then, and then what they'll do, they'll end up doing enough funding probably for three years, to do about a three-year package.
Okay, great.
Which is the Highway Trust Fund, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I was expected up to DC this week, but I couldn't just maneuver both Miami and DC, so I'm not going to DC. But my colleagues from SCAG are going up there this week as well, starting tomorrow.
Great, great.
So I could keep you, you keep me abreast and whatever they do, I'll make sure if they get any heads up on anything, make sure to tell our staff to, so they can communicate with you.
Great, that's terrific, thank you. Thank you. We're sorry, we're going to miss you in DC. On that note, though, the trip is coming together well and we've provided a draft itinerary. We expect many of those meetings to get confirmed this week, and so we'll keep sending around updates. It should be a very packed schedule as usual. And the only other piece that I wanted to flag, and this will be part of our DC trip as well, but we're really excited about the COPS funding that we were able to assist Santa Ana with last month. You know, it really is a testament to all the good work that the city's doing to get two years of back-to-back funding is really impressive, especially at this level, at the 1.25 million level, so we're really excited.
Leslie, do you see many back-to-back awards like that, or is this uncommon, or is this pretty par for the course?
You, you know, you do, it's not, it's not, I wouldn't say it's extremely uncommon, but you know, it's more typical for them to take a break in between. So we have seen it, but again, I think, you know, you really need to be, it's definitely a vote of confidence in the city.
Well, you know, I think, I think that last trip that we made to DOJ, when I was there over the summer, was helpful because I know that we spoke with, I forget who it was, but it was, it was one of the senior staff filling in for the person who we were going to meet with, but she seemed to be real receptive to what we were doing. I'm just, I'm just concerned because I'm just wondering if we're going to be eligible, we're going to be strong for maybe a round three application.
Well, I think the other thing, just to add to this, is the fact that the proposal, which was, as you know, this year was focused on building trust. So the community aspect to this was very important to, you know, to the, to the agency. So I think the quality of what Santa Ana submitted, you know, is testimony to why it got back-to-back dollars.
All right. I agree. No, I think staff did a great job. You all did a great job. I think the more times they saw us in person, physically there, knocking at their door, helps. So we're going to do that as many times as we have to, so.
Yeah.
Did you have a couple more things for us, Leslie, or?
I think, you know, the rest of, the rest is in the memo. Happy to take any questions if there are things that you want us to cover more specifically. And I also just wanted to take a moment to introduce by phone, and then folks who are going to be in DC next week will get to meet in person, but we have Jenny Kelly, who just started last week, is going to be part of the Santa Ana team, and she comes to us from Senator Grassley's office. And so we're just really, really excited to have her. She's only been here a week, but she has already been making a huge difference, and so she is here by phone as well.
Can you, can you repeat the name once again, Leslie, just so we can have it clear on our end?
Jenny Kelly. Jennifer Kelly, yep.
Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team. We look forward to meeting you in a couple of weeks. But I think the councilwoman has a couple of questions, so the floor is yours, Michelle.
Yes, and hopefully, Dan, you'll be able to get back home. You sound really sick, man.
I will, I will. I'll be well.
Okay. Leslie, just two things. You know, since I will not be attending this trip, and I was supposed to be in DC this week on behalf of SCAG for transportation as well. I have, you know, we just had a transportation and development meeting last week, and as we move forward with OCTA, we've been really trying to do some grade separations. There's been many in the pipeline here in Santa Ana for 10, 15, 20-plus years, on hold, no funding. You know, these are priority items. We have no funding. We're going through environmentals through, through OCTA, which they are paying for, but then there's no funding to actually move the project forward, to actually, you know, do the actual grade separation. And so we have two specific ones, and so I just want, they brought this to, they only brought one of, one of them to our attention last week, which was the seventeenth and grand grade separation. But we have one on Santa Ana Boulevard that we've been trying to work on. I know since I've been on this city council for nine years, and so I'm trying to make it a top priority. Grade separations are extremely important. A lot of them are getting done in North County, but they're not getting done here in Central, where we have had various incidents and then noise levels as well. And so I'm just wanting us to keep that in the radar, any funding for doing grade separations in conjunction, when making sure that we have pedestrian paths as well as we move forward with the streetcar, specifically on Santa Ana Boulevard. I just want that to be on our radar and my colleagues' radar as we head out, head up there to DC, because there is funding for it. And I know we just passed Tiger One and Tiger Two grants, and I'm not sure if our city applied for Tiger Two grants, but that's what, that was our opportunity to help in partnership with OCTA to get some of that funding. And so any other funding mechanisms that are available to do these grade separations, I think it's important that you can just keep us abreast of any of those opportunities. My second thing that I wanted to bring up, that the City of Santa Ana received a grant through the CDC, as you are fully aware, granted the city for the next two years, but the third year is possible, you know, because of the budget changes, there's possibility of discontinuing that health grant. So, and you helped, you all helped us out, send a letter and contact some of the folks from CDC. So again, I'm not sure where they're at. I was expected to be up there in DC and I was going to go to their office and also visit the First Lady, you know, as I'm trying to bring her out here in May to La Quinta. And so I'm just hopeful that as we move forward, you could keep that, again, on top of your list as well, what other funding that we can move forward towards, how.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great. So Leslie and Dan, Dan, you don't have to say much. We can't hear you two clearly on this end anyways, but we know you're, you've done a lot already. You're probably exhausted from talking, speaking on our behalf already. Why don't we bounce to something else, number six for us here on this agenda. You've already touched upon it, which is the trip that we have scheduled for, I believe it's the 27th of October through the 26th, through the 28th. So we have a draft agenda for the meetings that we have tentatively scheduled. Do you want to address any of those, Leslie? I think you already have, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, we're extremely excited to have you guys here, and I think that, you know, we've tried to work an agenda that really aligns with the city's priorities, you know, ranging from streetcar, some of the homelessness issues that we've talked about, the promise zone, we're meeting with HUD, we're talking, you know, Councilor Martinez, it's interesting that you're.
Is now exiting.
Whoops. Hello?
Oh, you're still here.
Okay.
I think we lost Dan or we lost somebody.
We have lost Dan. But you know, we may want to think about adding CDC based on what Councilor Martinez was just sharing about the third year possibly being in jeopardy. So that might be something we might want to take a look at. But I think we've got a really solid lineup of meetings. The White House should be hearing from them shortly to talk about MDK. I think it'll be a really productive set of visits.
Great. And I see some of the, some of the pending meetings that you have on the second page that we haven't finalized yet. FYI for everybody, and everybody should know this, is that I won't be able to attend the meeting on, well, maybe I could or could not.
Is now joining.
Okay, so we have somebody back. Who's back with us? Is that you, Dan?
Yeah, it's me.
Gotcha. For the Transportation 3:30 meeting, that's the one I should stay away from, right, Sonia? Is that, is that one I should probably?
The streetcar?
Yeah. Is this a streetcar or is this other transportation issues?
I had an answer, David, what's his name? It's the streetcar primarily, and Mayor ProTaman, Councilman Martinez, the, the OCTA is the lead agency for the federal program, and I know that Holland Knights asked us to coordinate. This is simply a meet and greet to let them know that the streetcar is very, deemed very favorably at the local level and that we totally support it, and frankly, the council voted unanimously to endorse the streetcar. So we just wanted them to know that, that unlike some jurisdictions where the streetcar is hotly debated, in Santa Ana, it's deemed very favorable.
Got it. In the interim, do you mind, Madam City Attorney, just looking into it to see if I can go ahead and join that meeting?
Yeah, I can do that. And if the meeting is primarily informational, you, I believe you won't have a conflict.
Got it.
But if they're going to be making any governmental decisions, you would, so I will double-check that and get confirmation from the city manager's office.
I just figured when we go up there, we don't have a time, we don't have any time to eat lunch. I figured I'd grab some lunch at that time and maybe eat something, so.
[laughing].
Right?
They keep you working.
But on that note, Leslie, if you could just, as it comes to maybe finalizing the agenda, you know, a couple of things I'd like you to think about, in addition to what Councilman Martinez mentioned, was just this homeless problem that we're dealing with out here, so to the extent we can, you know, we, I met with somebody, I think, from the Council on Homelessness, but I want to speak with somebody who can help us augment some monies that we're, we're going to start setting aside here, and we want to see if we can augment there. So I really don't want to talk about it philosophically. We all get the idea. We don't need to, you know, discuss it in principle. We know how important it is. We want to, we want to study it more in a quantifiable way, where, you know, what is it that we can do to maybe leverage some monies that might be available federally? So that's one. The other one is talking about, I know with the administration, they spoke to us about immigration last time, and how this area in particular is important to them. So maybe that gets added on when we meet with the administration on, on the HUD and on the promise zones, and you know, my brother's keeper, I know Councilman Benavides is very interested in those issues. But I think we tack on immigration and just more so just processing applicants here. We have about, I think, a million applicants in the area that are in and around Santa Ana, so to the extent we can get some support in any way from the administration to process those would be great. So those were my two things, and the last thing for staff is I know that I, I'm going to be going back to DC in November, as many of you know, on something unrelated as well, similar to the councilwoman. But, you know, I don't know, Madam City Attorney, I guess we can't go together, right? The councilwoman and I, because of this committee, makes it difficult for us to go back as a group to DC, or?
Well, you can travel there. We just have to notice, notice that you might be having a meeting, but if it's a purely social event, or something that's not within the jurisdiction of this committee, then you're free to travel. The, the challenge becomes when you're meeting together on issues that would fall within this committee's jurisdiction, or the jurisdiction of another committee. I believe you both serve on development.
But that's almost every meeting that we're going to have.
Yeah, and that way, and then all we have to do is we work with staff. I, I just, the reason I say that is I don't like the Brown Act to prohibit you from doing good things, and this is good stuff when you go down to DC and help advocate for the city. So it's just an issue of us having to prepare a meeting notice. If you're fine with that, then we get the details from you and we can try to make that happen.
Got it.
If you, if you would prefer not to have that appearance, then you should separate from each other. Travel and not meet in the same room.
We like to hang out together, so that's going to be impossible.
So I'll work, I'll work with staff, and we've done this once before, where we made it possible for you to do the work you wanted to do.
I'm just anticipating me going back to DC a little bit more often. I may not be able to coordinate, so in the event that that doesn't, that that happens, I know we, even though we're on two committees together, maybe the council member, maybe Councilman Benavides goes with the councilwoman, I don't know. We'll figure it out, but if you can, maybe give us a little bit more direction on that.
Okay. Yeah, because the key is making sure that we notice and the public has an opportunity to know where you are when you're in DC and who you're talking to, if you're discussing city business.
Got it. So Leslie, you got those points. Anything else, Councilman?
Yeah, just really quickly, since you guys are meeting with HUD, I know, I mean, Leslie, I'm not sure if you know, George Gonzalez works directly with Julian Castro, good friend of mine. And so I mentioned to him last week, or I think, I think I'm, I'm just, I travel so much that I can't even keep it together these days, but I think I was in DC last week for the CHCI and had the opportunity to speak with Secretary HUD, Julian Castro, and also Jorge. And so I'm wanting to make sure, if maybe I can connect you guys, he works directly, and I was telling them about some of the challenges with homeless and how he could be very helpful, and to, and to the secretary I was speaking with, and very excited about what's happening in Santa Ana. And so hopefully, you know, I would be, be great to bring him down here, but, and I'm trying to invite him as well through, through SCAG, but as we move forward here just with the city, I'm wanting to make sure that, you know, whatever relationships I have, that I definitely can, you know, bring folks to the fold as well to be very helpful to the city. And Jorge Gonzalez could be very helpful, and he comes from Santa Ana and he works directly with Julian.
Oh, awesome. That's fantastic. Thank you.
So if, before this meeting occurs, and I think you know Jorge as well, he used to work with Mauro Morales, directly with Mauro, and, and so he works directly with, and so we need to use our relationships and our contacts, and so I'm just wanting to make sure if I can connect you all. We've been communicating via email these past couple of weeks of regards to other things, but I want to make sure to help the city in whatever possibly way I can. I want to make sure I do that with the relationships that we already have.
It's a great point. I think, you know, with the councilwoman's role as the president of Leo, it's a national position, so we want to make sure that we can, we can squeeze that as much as possible. So, okay, that being said, thank you both. Dan, get better. We'll see you soon.
Yes.
There, you know, I had a sinus infection, I think, last season, and it was horrible because it doesn't let you function, and you almost feel like you have vertigo it sometimes as well.
So what do you, what do you recommend? What do you recommend?
Take some Sinute Tab. That really helped. I mean.
Wetscape? Is it Wetscape? Is that what you're telling me?
I forget what it was, but it was something that cleared it up. It took care of it, but more than anything, get some rest. I know we're going to be busy when we get out there with you, and thanks for the update. Thank you, Leslie, and we'll, we'll catch up with you guys very soon.
Sounds great. We'll look forward to seeing you.
Thank you both.
Bye.
Moving along to.
All in good night.
Is now exiting.
So now that we've taken care of our federal legislative update, why don't we move to our third item, which is our state.
Is now exiting.
Our state legislative update from the one and only Chris Townsend, who we don't get to see often enough, but who is now here before us. I almost forgot what he looked like, but it's good to see him. Did the Raiders win this weekend?
We did not lose this weekend.
We did not play.
Take what you can get. Thank you very much, Chairman, Councilman Martinez. Appreciate the opportunity to give this update. Couple of things, we do not have anyone on the phone. We have Casey here in person, which is always great. Also, he's our state Capitol Director. In our Sacramento office, we have Casey and five other registered full-time lobbyists that help with the effort. I think some of you met some of them on your trips up. And then Corey Williams is a senior associate in our Southern California office. Thank you. Senior associate in our Southern California office here in Orange County. We have four registered lobbyists there that often travel to Sacramento or DC, depending on the client and the issue, or work on regional things. So I'm happy they're both here, and with that, I'll turn it over to Casey to make the part of the presentation and look forward to answering any other questions you have.
Yeah, so obviously, the legislature in Sacramento has concluded their work for the year. They adjourned on September 11th, and then the governor had until October 11th to take action on the measures the legislature passed. So the last several weeks have been, seen a lot of movement on bills, and now we have a clearer picture of what happened this legislative year. So I'd like to try to kind of hit some of those points and then happy to answer any further questions. A lot of the items that occurred in any legislative session, but particularly this year, kind of waited till the end of session. One of those items that had been talked about all year, had been working on all year, but ultimately happened on the final day of session, was a budget trailer bill modifying the provisions of redevelopment dissolution. The governor, you may recall, had originally made a proposal back in January, which was further fleshed out in May. Original, initial reactions to those proposals were not positive. There was, the way they were defining some loans and limiting some agreements between cities and former RDAs was, had the potential to be very negative. Ultimately, through compromise and through working with the, primarily the Democrats on the Assembly side, a bill came forward, had many of the provisions that the governor wanted kind of in big picture, but the language was, was pared back to be more beneficial to cities. We'll obviously start to see Department of Finance implementing those provisions. Some of the major ones have to do with the definitions of loans that were entered into, as well as overall amounts that can be claimed for those loans. The way it was settled is that loan agreements, up to $5 million per agreement, can, can be honored. That's kind of the cap. It will be interesting to see if there's additional legislation on that next year. The way it was written, the way the bill was written and the way it's being interpreted are maybe not as clear as they could be. The Department of Finance insists that it's a $5 million per contract and not per entity, but we'll, we'll see. Additionally, as part of that, there was finally a release of some level of 2011 bonds for RDAs that went out and did bonding in 2011, which included the city. There was provisions to access a portion of that money, up to 100% for affordable housing related purposes, and then depending upon when you issued those bonds, a sliding scale of 45% down to 25% for non-housing related items. That, I should also preface that that's predicated on receiving a finding of completion from the Department of Finance, is when the bulk of that accessing comes on. Department of Finance, I think they would like to be done with redevelopment dissolution language, but we'll see what happens next year. Another major issue that finally came together in the last 48 hours of session was establishing the regulatory framework for medicinal cannabis. This has been a topic that's been, you know, been debated in Sacramento for the last three to four years. Finally, through a stakeholder process and engagement of the administration, everyone was able to come to, to agreement on a, on a regulatory framework that locals, maintains local public, local control at support of public safety, and then also folks within industry and on patients advocates all could agree on. So that's been passed. That still has to go through a regulatory process to further establish rules, so it's probably going to be another year or so in, in the complete development of that, but that, that is in place, that has passed. Additionally, we're, we're likely to see a initiative in November of 2016 for, for adult use. There have been, I want to say at this point, probably half a dozen filed with the Attorney General's Office, and likely to be more coming before, before a final proposal is kind of agreed upon and then pursued for the ballot, but.
Casey, before you go into the initiative a little bit more.
Sure.
So the three bills that were passed, 266, and then the Senate version, I know there was a third, what is it, is there any danger in it preempting the, you know, the ordinance that we adopted here?
No, the bills, the bills maintain specificity throughout the measures that they, they preserve local control, and so existing ordinances are in place. In fact, if the cities wanted to enact ordinances, they can, they still have an opportunity to do so. So they were really meant to preserve what has already been done at the local level, honor that, but then also establish a framework that, that can apply for others that have.
So there's no conflicting language that you see?
No, and what we've done, and I just want to jump in real quick, so I just want to let you know, even as of today, I've, I've seen my first draft. So I've asked our staff to prepare for the council, we'll be distributing to the council, an analysis of the state regulation and the city's ordinance, our own initiative, and doing the comparisons that we can tell you, the council here, the areas were completely clear, here's some areas, and maybe we're going to make some suggestions to you on what you might want to tighten up or let go, because one of the most significant pieces of legislation is that we're going to see, you know, another state, is it going to be entity or an agency of some type that's going to step in and do a lot of the regulatory safety permit aspect, what our police department's doing? And so we'd like to get our police department maybe out from underneath that if, in fact, the state's going to do that work.
It could go to the ABC model, either ABC grows and it becomes ABCM, or it becomes a.
Correct.
A completely independent third-party agency. I don't know. I think that's part of the discussion that still needs to be had, but.
So we're creating a comparison chart for you, so you all can make good policy decisions on how you want to move forward, but hasn't preempted us.
Also because, yeah, also because we're going to be, I know there's a catch-all term and clause in our ordinance that will allow us to revisit and do some housekeeping stuff. We don't want it to conflict with anything that's there, so to, to the extent you all can provide us guidance and parameters, I guess, within, within which we can operate.
Get that analysis too, that'd be helpful.
Yes.
Maybe we can ask along to your, our draft, and we'd love to get your input on that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I, I think that it's probably safe to say that in the coming years, as, as this starts to get implemented on the state level, that we'll see some revisions in legislation where they feel that they can tighten up, you know, state policy as well. Like I said, there, there's likely to be a, an initiative at least pursued. I would assume that, you know, the backers will have a sufficient level of funding to get something on the ballot, but that would, that in theory would fall under the framework that the state's establishing as well, so. But there will be, likely be a, an adult use, recreational use measure to be contemplated in November by the voters.
Keep us posted on that. What's next?
Definitely. Just a couple of other items. One did want to talk about transportation, was definitely a major topic this year, even if ultimately there wasn't a lot of results that came out of that. There's been a push within the legislature by the administration to create a new funding source for transportation infrastructure. Ultimately, and through the legislative process, through the normal session, they weren't able to reach agreement. Fundamentally, it's coming down to an issue that Republicans don't want to vote for new revenue sources, whether they be gas taxes, registration fees. So the governor did call a special session of transportation. There was actually a, and the legislature convened a conference committee to meet during the recess that they're in right now, so they can talk about these proposals. That conference committee actually met on Friday to discuss four of the proposals that are out there, the governors, the, the Democrats, which is being pushed by the, the conference committee, and then the two Republican proposals. They really vary across the board in, in level of funding and kind of where those would come from. Generally speaking, the Republican proposals don't rely on any new fees or taxing, or taxes. It's redirection of largely cap and trade dollars and then savings through Caltrans or, I guess through Caltrans and other state agencies to generate funding. The two Republican proposals generate approximately $3 billion and $4.5 billion each. The Democrats and the governor's proposals rely on a broader mix of revenues, which would include registration fees, gas tax increases, and some other items. Since they do, the Democrats' proposals do involve taxes and fees, they require a two-thirds vote. To date, the Republicans have been holding together in their, in their resistance to those. So not a lot came out of Friday, other than, you know, kind of an airing of where everyone's starting from. I think everyone agrees that there needs to be additional investment in, in transportation infrastructure. How we get there in an election year may be, may be a bit challenging, but that's obviously an item that we'll, we'll be keeping on top of. In the memo, we kind of laid out some of the, some of the more higher-profile local government issues that, that we weighed in on. One that I did want to mention was, was mentioned earlier on homelessness. There, there were a couple of bills this year in the legislature dealing with the topic of homelessness. One failed early on. The other one that, that kind of kept going through the legislative session was AB 718. It would have prohibited the criminalization of sleeping in a lawfully parked vehicle. Obviously, not a, a root cause of homelessness, but one of the, one of the effects. So this is kind of where the, the homeless conversation turned. Ultimately, that bill was unable to garner the support it needed on the Senate floor. The Senate Transportation and Housing Committee has committed to holding informational hearings and, and they want to start talking more about the root causes of homelessness in the state and more comprehensive solutions, what can be proposed within the legislature. We're, we're kind of seeing a lot of, a lot of bills that are going kind of after minor aspects of homelessness, but nothing that is really kind of trying to get at the, the root causes or, or kind of some of the overarching items that the state can take on. So while nothing happened on the homeless issue this year, we do anticipate that conversation to continue into next year. I think, oh, and the one other item, and my colleague Corey Williams may touch on it as well. Obviously, water was just a huge issue this year. State conservation levels, the governor had his, had his drought declaration earlier this year, which is set to expire in February, which established, which established drought conservation targets for all jurisdictions within the state. To date, the statewide, the state's been meeting the averages. Obviously, some cities, including Santa Ana, have been exceeding their targets, which is, which is fantastic. The rest of the state appreciates your help.
Do we get some sort of offset on that or is that...
Not, not, not yet.
Look into it, look into it.
There has already been discussions about the state board looking at renewing and revising those emergency regulations, like you said, were in, set to expire in February. We're going to be entering a very interesting period where it's likely that large portions of the state will be experiencing an El Nino significant weather event, while at the same time in Sacramento, we're talking about extending water conservation measures. So it's going to be very interesting to see how the Water Board decides to revise those conservation measures. And then they're likely, depending upon kind of what the weather looks like this year, we may see additional legislative efforts. There was a call in September by 47 members of the Assembly for the governor to call a special session to deal with water. A lot of that was due to the emergency drought funding that had been made available each of the last two years has been slow in getting out. There have been some, some funds that have gone out quickly, rental assistance, emergency drinking water, but some of the funds that have been dedicated for more infrastructure have been slow to, to move out. So unlikely that that special session is going to happen, but obviously it does draw a point when you have more than half the members of the Assembly saying that they want the governor to, to put renewed attention. So water, conservations, drought, El Nino is all going to be, you know, kind of a, a big theme going forward.
I know the councilwoman has some comments on the water.
Yeah, on the, on the water thing, and I think it's great news since we have Rendell becoming, you know, Speaker of the House for us, who's a big champion on water and so, and you guys, you all have relationships with him and certainly I do as well. And so it's a good thing for us, not just for, you know, predominantly for Los Angeles, you know, what he represents, but it's exciting that, you know, he really championed something and was able to move something forward. My question is on the water, you know, and we have a lot of bonds out there and I'm not sure what the city currently, if our staff is working with you directly or what monies we are eligible for. Specifically, I'm really concerned and hoping that we get some kind of funding for the Santa Ana River Trail. That's one, and can we partner with the county to do so? Number two, the other concern I have is as we move forward, the city has stopped watering its medians and we're trying to figure out some kind of funding, you know, to, to, to transform how we're, however we're going to do that, replace that with California-friendly, but we can't use potable water, so we've stopped. So what is that next phase at the state level that is going to be able to help local municipalities? You know, because we can't, you know, as soon as it turns brown, you know, the next step is that we can't just leave it that way. We have to figure out a way to either do it California-friendly or figure out another source of water, which is recycled water, which unfortunately, because of the city, you know, took so long in many aspects and many areas, you know, it would be very difficult for us to figure out a way to do recycled water. It costs a lot more, so it's in our best interest to do California-friendly, but it's going to cost us money.
And on that point, Mr. City Manager, maybe we can have our Director of Public Works get more closely with, with TPA. I know what we did when I was at the Water District is we had some very shelf-ready projects that would be, you know, a good fit. They were eligible, they met the criteria and, you know, they were ones that we were going to focus on. And we did sort of a bifurcated list where we had high priority things that were, you know, that, that we thought we could compete strongly for, and then there were others that, you know, maybe not as strong. So to the extent we can do that, maybe you can work Casey and Chris with, with Fred and, you know, David on that.
Definitely. To, to the question regarding funding availability, I should mention there was a bill this year, it was AB 1164 by, by Mr. Gatto out of Los Angeles...
Mike, yeah.
That would have provided $300 million over three fiscal years for local turf replacement programs. Ultimately, in Appropriations Committee, they pulled that money out. It deals, it still deals with some, some drought resistant and some landscaping issues, but it doesn't have funding in it. That will likely reoccur in the January discussion. I think, given there was 100 million general fund over three years, there was obviously some, some hesitancy on the state's level to invest that without it being included as part of the budget package. The governor did make, I think it was 29 million available earlier in the year for turf replacement. That was largely for geographic areas that are not down here, for the Central Valley.
Correct, yes, yeah.
So, so it's one of those things where the governor has put money in. I think there will be a renewed push, obviously, given the popularity and success of some of the programs down here. I mean, that's, I think the state could see a good investment.
As that is on your radar, just keep in mind, whatever I can do to help navigate through the Metropolitan Water District as well and through here and, and Councilman Sarmiento has relationships as well, still with the Orange County Water District. I do not, I don't sit there, but, but whatever we can do, because I try my very best through the Metropolitan Water District to help municipalities get funding. Unfortunately, it was more residential that received the majority and, and, you know, and private industry commercial, more so than anyone else. And that was my problem with the Metropolitan Water District. It is what it is, and so now, you know, I'm on a different fight. What can we do at the state level with the governor? He's making that a top priority, so I'm trying to do whatever I possibly can. And as people too, you know, from a policy perspective, and I'm talking with legislators, how do we connect the dots between land use and water as well? Because there's a lot of policies that are in place currently now, in particular in regards to storage, that it limits our ability to actually have storage capacity. So, you know, and I think it's very counterintuitive. They're asking us to move in these new directions when we have policies in place that hinder us from moving in the direction they want us to move in. And so I, I'm hoping that they're going to, you know, move forward and, and have this obsession with the governor, because these issues need to be brought out. I've been meeting with lots of folks and trying to figure out how do we connect the land use with the water component? And so I'm tired of talking about water, but it's important to, to tie that connection because as we update our general plan, it's going to be vital that we create a sustainability plan with water included and how do we move, you know, our ability to store water in the future and partner with, you know, other agencies that we're working with. So I'm just wanting us to keep all of that in mind and how can you all help us? And as many times I'm in Sacramento, what is it that I can do? Our staff can give you my schedule, I'll be up there in December. What is it that I can do to help when I'm up there with SCAG or other entities or with the Metropolitan Water District so that I can push on behalf of Santa Ana and help you all as well?
Take her up on it.
We will. Before we leave, the subject of water, I wanted to invite Corey to make a few comments. Corey Williams, amongst other roles, is not only one of our water policy experts with Casey, but is the expert on grant funding, particularly Prop 1.
Prop 1.
And I don't know if you want a few quick comments to make about it.
There, in addition to, you know, Prop 1 and the, the $7.5 billion, there's $1.5 billion for fiscal year 15, 16 available through that. And we included a matrix in your report with kind of all of those opportunities that are available and the money that's coming up for next year. In addition to that and the legislation that Casey talked about, there's a new pot of money that's being released. It's through Department of Parks and Rec. It's old money from Proposition 40, a previous parks bond. It's $26 million that is being developed right now. We know that the maximum award will be $1 million. And because of that link to Prop 40, it has to have a focus on parks.
Oh, great, I've got a perfect project.
Likely soccer fields, baseball fields, but also because of the focus on drought and water conservation, they also want to keep that nexus involved. So there's work groups happening now, stakeholder groups, we're involved in those and we'll keep you posted on kind of the requirements as they develop, but they're also going to be looking at, you know, the demographics for eligibility requirements, youth, kind of all of those pieces. So if you do have a perfect project in mind, we would love to hear about that and know about it, so we can set you up to receive that funding.
I'll send the email to Jorge and to our Parks and Rec Director, but he's been talking about it for quite some time. It's on our Santa Ana River Trail, Bicentennial Park, where we have some land where we want to do some kind of conservation effort with some education component, because it has to be an educational component. So at the same time, we can use the conservation and beautify the area as well, so...
I think we may have a couple of wells out there as well.
And we do, yeah. So, yeah, some, some pretty good things.
And I just wanted to add that we recognize the admonition from the Mayor, Pro Tem. We will definitely leverage both of you, your relationships as how we can work through the process.
You didn't hear me say anything. I'm never...
Yeah.
I volunteer of the councilman.
Yeah, the other thing is the homeless, as, as you mentioned, Casey, that's a top priority of ours. And I know, you know, with the legislation that, that is up there and more in particular towards housing and how do we sustain that? So it's not about shelters, but how do funding streams come? And I'm not sure if there's anything in the pipeline now as it pertains with affordable housing, with cap and trade, where we'll be able to find sustainable housing for homeless. I think we need to move into that Utah model and I, I know there's many legislators that are interested, but I'm not sure if they're going to be able to get the funding through cap and trade or other sources. And so just wanting to make sure to keep an eye on that, if money does come available that we understand, that we hear about it and so that we could apply. That's, that's what I have on the homeless, so. And then finally, on transportation, just wanted to thank you all for helping our staff with the Act of Transportation Grants. You know, we received tons of money and it's exciting. And, you know, look, let's just be honest, the reason why Santa Ana received its money is because other municipalities in Orange County are not applying and so they're trying to do their fair share by its region and I get it and I understand it, but more and more cities in Orange County are starting to, you know, like Anaheim and Garden Grove are starting to figure out, oh, wow, Santa Ana's taking all the money, we better figure it out. At OCOC, they were just discussing that and we have a meeting on Thursday, so a lot of the cities were saying, whoa, Santa Ana's just getting everything. It's either Santa Ana or Anaheim. And so we're going to have competition and, which is, I think it's good that, that it's going across, that hopefully the other cities around the county will figure it out, that they need to move in that direction as well. But it's been great that we've received a, a majority of the money, so 11 and 7, and so we're doing pretty well, 21 million. So it's, it's unheard of for Orange County because most of the money's always going to Northern California and Los Angeles. So I just want to thank you all for supporting us.
Good work, and I think it's because we use it wisely, right? So, I mean, that makes a big difference. Depends how we, how we apply it. So Casey, anything further or Corey or Chris?
No, happy to, happy to answer any questions, but that's what I have.
Well, I just wanted to see if staff had any things that they wanted to mention, stress. I know I have a couple of things that, that were mentioned already, I just wanted to make a quick emphasis on, but I know you all are...
What other further you?
So, given that, I think the councilwoman had mentioned the whole affordable housing discussion, and I know there's been some movement up there. To the extent that you can give us a hand, I don't think we have to, we're, we're limited by just cap and trade as being the only sources, although there, you know, that is another, another opportunity. I don't think they've issued too many of those funds out. I think we were, I think one of our developments here in town received some of that. But to the extent we can, you know, get some guidance from you on some support for that, that would be great. The other issue was, you know, I guess this is sort of a nexus with open space, but it's developing maybe a joint use agreement with one of our community centers in town, Delhi. And so, you know, I know you all have worked and helped us with that when it was first being developed as a community center, but, you know, we have joint use agreements with the school district on many of their sites. This one's interesting because we own the land. The center is actually operated by a nonprofit third party, and so we want to see how we can maybe discuss the whole joint use relationship there, because we also want to talk to the, the Community College and seeing about sharing their assets, but we just have to look at all, all opportunities. So to the extent you all can keep your eye on, on that one, that would be really helpful. That's an important center. So, and, and there's some willingness there. They're not doing as well right now and there might be a good, a good opportunity, so. Nothing, seeing nothing further?
Just one item.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tem? I know that you all did great work in the state as a whole on the prepaid mobile phones and that's going into effect in 2016. Anything you want to share with us on that issue or has that pretty much been resolved?
Yeah, I, I don't believe there was any further legislation introduced on that issue this year. I think they're kind of working through the regulatory process to try to implement that, but I haven't seen any, any legislative interest, which is, which is probably a good thing.
Anything on internet sales or capturing taxes for internet or anything out there?
No, that, no. I think that's largely federal.
Great.
Okay, seeing nothing further. Thank you all. Thank you, Chris, Casey, Corey, the whole team. Moving on to number four, which is the League of Cities. Tony, you're up.
Yes, committee member, city staff, thanks for the opportunity. The League drafted an attached report, legislative report, that highlights the governor's actions on the priority bills being tracked by the League. And I just wanted to highlight a few that I think would be of key interest to the city. First, the bills that we supported that were signed into law. AB 2 by Assemblymember Alejo establishes community revitalization and investment authorities. It deals with the post-redevelopment world and it addresses areas of the state where they're economically stressed areas. So again, that's AB 2. The League actually hosted a webinar on this legislation. If the city, for some reason, wasn't able to participate or needs those materials, please let me know. Again, that's AB 2. Two bills dealing with housing funding. AB 90, it establishes the Department of Housing and Community Development to administer federal housing trust funds. Those, those funds are supposed to be allocated next year and the bills to ensure that those funds are delivered locally and expedited to the local level. That's AB 90 that was signed into law. Also, AB 388, it also deals with the Department of Housing and Community Development to work closely with the Department of Veteran Affairs to put in some performance and evaluation data to ensure that the $600 million in Prop 41 money goes towards the housing of homeless veterans. So again, that bill was signed into law. Both bills we supported, so we're happy to see them signed into law. As was already addressed, one of the major legislative policy areas that was finally achieved this year is the regulation of, of medical marijuana dispensaries. A trio of bills, AB 243, AB 266, which... Uh, a trio of bills, uh, AB two forty-three, AB two sixty-six, which was actually co-sponsored by the League and the California Police Chiefs, uh, and SB six, um, forty-three. Uh, the League has been working extensively on this area, so we're really glad that both, uh, all three bills were passed. Um, our main priority was local control, where cities can, uh, decide the time, place, and manner of dispensaries, whether they want to allow them or out, or not, or just completely, um, outright ban them. Uh, also, public safety was a, a, a big priority for us. We're hosting a webinar tomorrow, uh, at ten, uh, AM for our members. Um, there's a lot of questions being asked, but, um, the webinar is gonna address how cities can prepare, uh, implementation, taxation issues, um, whether local control is indeed protected. Again, that's tomorrow at ten o'clock. Uh, if for some reason you cannot make it, um, let me know and I will get those materials over to you. Um, so those are the bills that were signed, um, into law that were, um, supported by the League. Um, two bills real quickly that were supported by the League but were unfortunately vetoed is AB thirty-five, which would, would have increased, um, low-income housing credits from seventy to a hundred and seventy million. Uh, that was unfortunately vetoed. Uh, and SB one sixty-eight, which deals with unmanned drones. Uh, if you recall during, um, uh, the fires, uh, this past year, there were some drones that were interfering with, um, with, uh, helicopters to, to put out those fires. Uh, this bill would have given first responders immunity from essentially shooting down those drones if they interfered with firefighting, uh, services. The, the bill was vetoed. Um, but we anticipate there's gonna be a lot more legislation coming out on, on drones and, um, and public safety.
Was that Cottles Bill?
Uh, no, that was actually Senator Gaines's bill.
Gaines's bill.
Yeah. Um, okay, just moving on, um, uh, bills, the, some bills, two bills that we, uh, that the League were, was opposed to that were unfortunately signed into law. Uh, one is AB fifty-seven, dealing with wireless and telecommunications facilities. Basically, it says that if a city doesn't approve a new telecom facility, uh, with the time allotted by federal law, that that, uh, telecom facility is automatically deemed approved. So, that's, um, again, it's a, a huge attack on local control. We were opposed to the bill. Unfortunately, it was signed. Uh, another bill that impacts local control is AB seven forty-four. Basically lowers the, um, parking standard, it lowers parking standards for, uh, new affordable housing, uh, projects. Uh, we were opposed to that bill and, and it was signed into law. Um, finally, just, uh, two bills that, that were opposed by the League that were fortunately vetoed. Uh, AB thirty-six, that would have, uh, essentially prohibited a city from acquiring, uh, military surplus equipment unless, uh, there was a public hearing. Uh, that bill was vetoed, uh, thankfully. And also, AB three oh five, dealing with workers' compensation. Uh, it would have increased litigation costs at a time when California ranks number one, um, for insurance premiums. Again, that bill was vetoed, so we're thankful for that. Um, all the bills are, are highlighted in the legislative report. Uh, if you have any questions on those bills specifically, please let me know. Um, the last thing I wanted to touch on, which Casey already mentioned, was, is, is transportation and, and more specifically, the funding of infrastructure. Um, there was a conference committee that was formed, uh, five members of the Assembly, five, uh, members of the Senate. Uh, and they've been doing some statewide hearings. The first one was this past Friday. The next one is tomorrow in Ontario. Um, that, that conference committee is gonna come out with its own proposals. The governor has his own, uh, his own proposal. Uh, all the proposals are gonna be, um, analyzed by the Legislative Analyst Office. Um, but ultimately, at the end of the day, the negotiations are gonna be taking place, uh, behind closed doors. Um, and there's, there's a big gap in terms of policy. I mean, the Republicans, uh, they want, uh, they don't want to raise any taxes. They, uh, wanna use, uh, cap and trade funding and they want to use the one billion dollars in, in wait fees. Uh, the Dems don't want any of that. So, it's gonna be very interesting to see what happens, especially in an election year. They could theoretically put together a ballot measure and put it before the voters. But, um, as we all know, it's gonna be very, very crowded, uh, November two thousand and sixteen, with several, uh, revenue increase measures that are already being discussed. So, with that, I'll just open it up to questions.
What a shock, right? So, um, do, if you need us to do anything, as, um, any letters in support or in opposition, you know, we, we've done that before. We've been tracking those pretty well. We've got a good system down, so just let us know so we can go ahead and opine. And, you know, even if they're, they are behind closed doors, they're gonna take the written communication into consideration, so.
Certainly.
Great. Questions? I have nothing. So, thank you, Tony. That was very helpful. Um, moving on, Francisco and Fred, you guys have the next item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento, Councilmember Martinez. Back in two thousand and twelve, council directed staff to evaluate the local preference ordinance. And as a result of that, uh, staff made a recommendation and council adopted an ordinance and resolution allowing for changes to the local preference ordinances. The requirements that were established at that time included that the contracts that would, uh, be eligible would be between five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars. And that the local vendors for Santa Ana would have to register with, uh, California Department of General Services. This is that procurement arm of the state of California. This also encompassed the Orange County businesses as well. And this was so that we can identify small businesses. So, if they registered as a small business with state of California, they were eligible to, to participate in the local preference ordinance. The change being is that for Santa Ana vendors, this would now mean that a seven percent local preference would apply to any bids that they would submit as opposed to the one percent. For Orange County businesses, that would move to four percent. Again, the, the key element here is the registration with the state of California. Um, what we did, what I've provided you is some information or, uh, in your packet, is information in terms of total contracts that the city has issued for fiscal year fourteen fifteen. Uh, so, and this will give you context when I start talking about this. Uh, context in terms of the, uh, analysis as we relate it to the local preference ordinance. So, we went back for two years and looked at fifty contracts, uh, of participants of Santa Ana vendors and Orange County vendors. Of fifty contracts that we took as a sample survey, only three Santa Ana vendors actually qualified because they're the only ones who registered with the state of California. And for Orange County vendors, only one was able to participate in the eligibility. Uh, of the fifty that we surveyed, sixteen, uh, actually had Santa Ana bids, uh, included. Of the sixteen, eleven were able to take advantage of the one percent ordinance and they will, and actually were successful. And if we, as we look at them, two actually benefited, um, of the seven percent. And we, and an additional one would have kind of, would have been successful if they would have registered with the state of California. So, in, in essence, the program as it, as it was developed has had very limited success in terms of Santa Ana vendors being able to gain the local preference ordinance. I think largely because as our staff has talked to local vendors, they are kind of reluctant to register with the state of California. They see it as onerous, although it's not an onerous process. They just have to register online. Um, so, uh, I think that's probably one of the, probably short-term obstacles that, you know, we may want to look at. Uh, as a matter of fact, our staff has been looking maybe to modify the, the resolution in order to remove that component. Um, and, but in, in, in the.
What's the harm in lifting that?
Uh, you know, I, I think, it, I, I don't see any harm, um, in terms of, of, uh, eliminating that component. I think it would have now allowed us to apply seven percent as a blanket to all Santa Ana vendors. It would allow us to market, uh, on a seven percent primarily, you know, for all Santa Ana vendors when they submit bids. I think that would be more, a better of a marketing strategy than, by the way, you have to register with the state. Um, so that's something that internally, you know, that my staff has been looking at in terms of, uh, making a change poss- possibly to the resolution.
I thought there might have been some exposure, or is there anything that, you know, I know when we were having this conversation, you know, we, I remember this, this saying, "We want them registered," but we didn't realize that so many of them weren't, or so many of them chose not to. So, I would think that the natural, you know, relationship with the chamber that we have is a chamber to say yes, no, you know, good idea, bad idea. Because we have this on the books. Nobody's using it. It's not benefiting who, you know, the target, uh, audience, so.
Interesting is that, um, as Francisco mentioned, you have this, um, ordinance twenty-eight twenty-eight that you adopted and you, uh, set some of your ground rules in there. Sorry. Your ordinance adopted the ground rules for your local preference. And then, the specific amount of the preference was supposed to be established by resolution, but it seems that some of these other things kind of found, um, their way into like the regulatory format. So, if you wanted to revisit some of those regulations in the resolution, you don't need to amend your ordinance. You can keep the good core, uh, uh, policy that you adopted and then work through the resolution process. So, we don't need like first reading, second reading. And so, there's a lot, and I understand staff is working on it. But from a process standpoint, you can keep your ordinance in play and then address some of these issues through the resolution.
Right. So, um, just to, um, just to let you know, we currently publish, uh, anytime we submit a bid, and it's in your packet too, we actually identify the local vendor preference, um, ordinance, uh, uh, within our packets.
It's not much of an increase prior to twenty twelve, actually, so it didn't help at all.
Not in the, not in the grand scheme of things. It didn't help.
It didn't really help at all. Just, I went back to my, to my notes from Jay Trevino, because I kept them all. And it didn't, like, I'm, I'm, it, it didn't work at all.
Well, I think, I, I think now, I think it's, it's in terms of marketing.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's marketing and I think it's an easier market, it's an easier sell if we can tell local vendors about this local preference ordinance without this other component on top of it. And it'd be, it, I mean, to me, it would be interesting to see if we adopt something along those lines. Maybe a year from now, here's, uh, from now after we adopt it to see what, what changes occur or if there's any difference.
Well, it sounds like a couple of things we can do, Mr. City Manager, is maybe look at revisiting that ordinance, maybe relaxing that standard or maybe making it optional. I don't know. Um, you know, the registration with the, with, you know, with the state. But also maybe working with the chamber, maybe working with others out there to just, and that's something we, I don't think we ever spoke about. Again, how, you know, how do we have this benefit on the books that maybe nobody knows about or maybe very few know about? So, I think we, you know, it's, it's, it's upon us to, to, to tell the, the whole, um, you know, the public, the business public.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman. We'll do that. Uh, we just had a grow conference. There was no table. They're discussing this program. There are other conferences the chamber has, and we'll work with Kelly Renders and Francisco and make sure that all the chamber members and as many businesses as possible know about this, uh, program.
Anything else you think that we could tweak or, or do to?
No, seven, you know, at the time, they did a, they did a survey in terms of where we should be.
This is mine, yeah.
Yeah, there was a, you know, they, they surveyed a lot of cities. And actually, one of the cities they did survey was the City of Phoenix, believe it or not. That was kind of one of the base, the, the base, uh, study elements.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think seven percent is fine for now, but, uh, I think for the most part, I think relaxing is like, and as the city manager has indicated, I think really making a, a, a much stronger effort in marketing. Back then, they did, you know, they did receive a letter from the Chamber of Commerce and the, the Business Council in terms of supporting the local preference ordinance. So, uh, I, there was a grand push back then, but, you know, uh, we'll probably, uh, continue, uh, probably on a stronger effort to, to reach out.
Since you, since you brought it up about Phoenix, I was gonna offer, uh, so there was a program like this in Phoenix?
I gave him the copy.
Pardon?
Before you were here, I actually gave him the copy.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
And, and it related to a disparity study, uh, about discrimination in the marketplace against minorities and small business and women-owned businesses. And after several hundred thousand dollar study, we were allowed to, uh, do this preference. We also had a person named Tony Hatcher, who was our outreach coordinator. They went and met with all the businesses and explained the program. I will tell you, uh, I believe the program was either discontinued or they basically said there's now parity in the marketplace, so we won't do it anymore. So, that's another thing we can do is the best practices. But, uh, I don't know why we started this program here in Santa Ana. Did, does anyone know?
Oh, yeah, well, it was my idea, um, and I brought this up, local preference in, in particular. And as you still can tell, the majority of our money is leaking out. It's not being reinvested back into Santa Ana businesses. And so, if our intent is to continue to, um, provide dollars to Phoenix, Arizona, as we did our red flags and all these other corporations, I could go on and on, most of our money is going out of the state of California, um, um, for the most part and, and into Los Angeles, the inland empire. It's not staying here in Orange County or in Santa Ana. And so, the intent was to make sure that we were able to give these people a, a equal playing field. And because we have not been able to market to our local businesses here. We have not been friendly to our business community and telling them that they can do business with the city of Santa Ana. We've, we've, we've had challenges in that regard. And so, I'm a little disappointed because my intent was totally different, was not to hinder the ability of these folks, that they had to register so that they participate. And, you know, as I'm looking at, I'm still going down my emails of Jay Trevino and how we got to here. And I don't think at the time that it wa- it was supposed to be a, um, a, 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 a regulation. I think it was optional and I don't know how we got from, from something optional saying that you must do it. So, um, I'm still trying to figure that out. And yes, it's weird that, you know, the planning director actually put this together. Well, no, it's just, it's mind-boggling, but that's the chaos that we had. And so, here we are today. The goal again, from a local preference, is that not only we were dealing with businesses here locally, here in the county, but, uh, as well, what are we dealing, dealing with when these corporations are here and are hiring outside folks? And I certainly understand prevailing wage and that's a whole different subject with Public Works and I don't want to include that. This is totally different. Um, and we've had conversations about this as well, that we wanted a comprehensive approach. One, not making sure that we don't discriminate women-owned businesses, minority businesses, but at the same time, creating an equal playing field for these small businesses that would not have the opportunity to do business with our city because they don't, they're not aware. So, it's not only just going to the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce, it's going to the Orange County Business Council. Because we need to make sure that our money is invested in Orange County and in Santa Ana and making sure that we create jobs in Orange County and in Santa Ana. So, when I'm thinking about a local preference, I'm also thinking about a regional, uh, thinking about Santa Ana and Orange County, not just Santa Ana. I'd rather have our dollars here from the government going to Tustin or other cities, ju- jurisdiction, but not to Los Angeles, not to Riverside, not to Phoenix, Arizona, and not to New York. How does that benefit California? How does that benefit Orange County? And how does it benefit Santa Ana? So, those are my comments and I'm just, um, hoping that we can bring something forward. Yes, I think we need to uplift that reg- that regulation. But there's a lot of other things that need to be more comprehensive as we, as it pertains to local preference. Um, and, and I think Count, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento mentioned it the last time as it, it pertains to discriminations and some of the business practices. That some of those, those business practices, that some of these businesses we're hiring are not very friendly to, um, to certain, you know, um, labor laws. Living wages. I could, I could go on and on. And so, we want a comprehensive local preference approach that is going to, you know, really look at the values of the city of Santa Ana and this council.
And just one thing I'd like to mention as we work with staff, that we have to just carefully look at the legal, um, authority for us to grant the local preferences. But, um, this is a good example of why when you're going to legislate and sort the legislative committee, um, this often happens, whether it's the local level, the state level, or even the federal level, you zero in on a, on a narrow issue. You try to solve the narrow issue of local preference, but you don't end up looking at the, um, how broad your purchasing ordinance is. So, one of the things you have in your purchasing ordinance, for example, to create efficiency and help with, with lower prices, is we allow piggybacks. Well, a lot of our work here on purchasing, I wouldn't say a lot, there's, there's, there's significant amount of our purchasing is done by piggybacks. Well, piggyback, um, purchasing is probably not going to result in you using your local pref- your local vendor because a lot of these piggybacks are done at the state level or even the national level. So, uh, if you're gonna visit it, I'm just encouraging you to take a broader perspective because you could draft a very good local ordinance and it's not gonna work if forty-two percent, you know, you're doing by piggyback. Which, by the way, is very efficient for us as staff because we can get good prices and good vendors doing that process. So, you have a lot of weighing to do, a lot of policymaking to do, but you need to look at it broader, not just so narrow.
Chris, you want to say something?
Just wanted to mention for the record that your Sacramento lobbyist is headquartered in Orange County. Within actually one mile of the Santa Ana boundary, so. And I, I'm not gonna comment about whether Casey or Cory think they make a living wage, but trust me, they do.
Well, you see, you see the unintended consequences we could have?
Mayor Pro Tem, uh, I don't know the, the answer to this question, but when we changed it in Phoenix, we had to, uh, make the change and make it preferential to the local, local marketplace. And I believe that probably would be Orange County. And what happened was that if you don't do it in coordination with the other cities, then everybody buys from Santa Ana, but nobody, I mean, we, we, we buy from everybody, but nobody buys from us because we have a discount. And then it, it's, so you almost have to have like a regional approach to it. Uh, and that's how we were able to do it in, in, uh, Maricopa County. Mesa, Glendale, Chandler, everybody has to be involved, Anaheim. Otherwise, you're basically setting yourself up for a disadvantage where we pay more, but the other cities will sell to us.
Right. Well, all, all these things we should keep in mind. Maybe what we could do is, um, it sounds like, um, if you could bring back some recommendations or bring back some, um, some adjustments that you might suggest. I think, I think we mentioned a couple here already. Let's take a look at them and, um, see those as, um, as adjustments that we can make with the, with the rest of the council. And, yeah, we'll look at all those. I, I personally think that, um, you know, I believe in, in the process. I believe that we can get to the intent. Um, it may be tricky. It may be difficult. We can't do something that's going to undermine us with other relationships that we have with our, with our counterparts in other cities. But the whole goal here is to try to bring back some of those funds, public funds that we're expending for services and goods and spend as much of it within our. we're expending for services and goods, and spend as much of it within our community. There is absolutely nothing that prohibits us. We're not saying we're going to be exclusive, but we're saying we'll use that as a factor. And if we can, we realize that that 7% or that 4%, that money comes back to us in a multiplier effect by much larger numbers. So we can certainly justify all that, you know, that preference if we had to, especially if we're being completely objective and neutral and looking at vendors that supply the same service here in Santa Ana as they would maybe in Los Angeles. And we say, look, we prefer here. And so I think that's the whole goal, and I think we can get there. It's not rocket science. So please, if you, if you can bring that back to us, would you bring it back to us here at this committee? We look at it and then we send it up, or is that the best way to do it?
Mayor Protem, if I may add the other angle to this thing on the Public Works side. Before I go there, I think I wanted to mention that cycle to, ATP cycle to contract the grants. I think the councilwoman mentioned there may not have been enough competition from Orange County. Just want to let you know that 55 applications were submitted from, from Orange County alone. And out of that 55, three went to, all three went to Santa Ana.
And I only state that, Fred, because in Orange County, there's only about five cities that are disadvantaged, right? So we have a huge, so I understand the whole process, but I'm just wanting to make it very clear, a lot of the cities in Orange are, couldn't figure out the disadvantaged portion even across California. And so that, that's probably one of the biggest, and I think we're trying to achieve and change that, and they're nodding their head, is because I too think that it's unfair. We're blessed that we are disadvantaged, and so why we received a lot of the money. But just keep in mind that Orange County is a different machine than most in, in the state.
Well, I think you're both right. I think that, you know, we, we compete well.
Well, yes, very well.
But obviously, I mean, you know, there are a lot of people that, that filed, but really don't understand it, because I think our staff is so well-versed in being able to present an accurate picture of who we are. We have good people representing us in Sacramento and in Washington, so I think we just, you know, were able to tell our story better.
Yeah, definitely team, team effort to produce the success. So as far as the Public Works is concerned, relating to local vendor preference, most of our contracts stay outside of the range of $5,000 to $100,000. As you know, we have to provide contracts to low bidders with the qualification and all of that. However, we have some common sense practices that has worked, and I wanted to mention some of that that would basically meet the intention of council in this area. One is, we would like to actually give contracts to local vendors because of their familiarity with the community. They are faster to respond, other than economic advantage of it. It actually has a practical advantage of it to a lot of our projects. We have language in our contract that encourage business to, businesses to locate to Santa Ana. The success story has been that graffiti removal contractor actually moved into Santa Ana area. We have our landscaping contractor, these are multimillion-dollar contracts over many years. Landscape contractors in, in Santa Ana, asphalt repair for our pothole repairs moved to Santa Ana. Also, we're requiring our contractors to purchase material and equipment from Santa Ana businesses. All our asphalt-related material are purchased by, to the Santa Ana vendors. Our graffiti paint, the entire paint, that's again, multimillion-dollar contracts over five years, it's all purchased from specific vendors in Santa Ana. We also request our contractor, when they ask for employees to come in and work part-time, full-time employees, to go through, utilize our Santa Ana work center. And they have hired a lot of people from work, work center for their, for their contract work. On the water side of things, we have right now 24 service, active service contracts. Three of them are awarded to Santa Ana companies, and 12 are from Orange County companies. So 315 of them are either in Santa Ana or it's Orange County. So even though we, we don't have any required, requirement to put these things in our contracts, but this, this move and this encouragement have produced some result in this, and we're going to push that forward as we, as we go along.
That's great, Fred. I really appreciated hearing that. And I know that you guys probably, in your common sense approach, stay away from companies that have, you know, litigation pending, you know, lists of violations that, you know, and a history of poor practices. So all those things, I think, just make us a more responsible, you know, hiring, you know, organizations so, and services. So all those things are, I think, are good and common sense. So go ahead.
Mayor Protem, I'm just wanting to make sure that as we do move forward, just to state again, because we, I think we said it twice, some of the best practices and common sense approach or guiding principles, because I don't think sometimes we don't understand. The contractors that we hire are technically employees of the city of Santa Ana, and they are a reflection on us. And so people don't care when they're out there filling potholes if they're Santa Ana employees or contractors or tree removal. All, all the residents care about in the business, all, all they know is that they work for the city of Santa Ana, right? So we need to make sure that when we hire these folks, that we go through some guiding principles and assuring that they do have good hiring practices, that they have good wages, that they don't, that they have not criminalized employees, et cetera, et cetera. We've seen a lot of it happen across the country, across the state, and certainly, we just need to be vigilant and as we move forward, that when we hire these contractors, that we're hiring the best, that are a reflection of the values of Santa Ana. It's very important for us to keep that in mind, all the way from the attorney's office, from the city manager's office, all the way to, to, to the Parks and Recreation and who we hire. These contracts are, are significant, in particular, our landscape. It's, it's tremendous. We just approve even our tree trimming, you know. It was over a million dollars, I think it was. And so this is not, this is not chump change. This is significant money that is making these businesses very successful, and we need to make sure that they're good stewards. And, and, and at the end of the day, they're employees of the city of Santa Ana, and, and we need to keep that in mind. And I just wanted to end some, when we're at our committee member comments.
Go ahead.
Oh, might as well. So I wanted to make mention, since we're on this subject, for example, and I'm not sure how much, what percentage, the city of Santa Ana buys stuff online. So that's a huge discussion at the state level where we're at now. For example, when you buy something online, like Michelle Martinez shops on Amazon a lot, right? And the warehouse, guess, guess where it's at? In San Bernardino. Guess who's getting the money? Not Santa Ana, San Bernardino. And so we need to be cognizant as we move forward and it pertains to transportation, infrastructure, you know, these conversations are being had at OCTA, they're being had everywhere, is that, you know, we don't have enough money, you know, to go around and where we're purchasing items online are, are somewhere else, and they're the ones that are receiving the benefit. And so I would like to know what percentage of things that we are ordering online and, and where that point is. I'm just trying to figure that out just here, because I've asked GAG, I've asked, I'm asking everyone, because this is a problem that many of us are trying to address from a transportation perspective and logistics at the state level, because it's not fair. When we talk about equity, that's not equitable. When Orange County is purchasing, believe me, and, and we're trying to figure out that number, in the hundreds of millions of dollars countywide, we're purchasing stuff from Amazon, UPS, you name it, and, and we're not receiving the money. Guess who's, you know, Ontario, San Bernardino, they're just living it up based on all the stuff that we're buying online. And so we need to keep that in mind, and I'm, I'm not sure where we're at at the state, if any legislation is coming up anytime soon to deal with this equity matter. But I know Darryl Johnson brought it up on Thursday, you know, Hassan is bringing, we're all starting to have these conversations, because we're wanting to fund transportation. And from a logistics perspective, we're trying to figure out, you know, you know, somebody has to get this, that, from the warehouse from San Bernardino, that truck over here to Orange County, and it's destroying our roads. It's destroying our roads. And guess what? They're not paying, right? Just like the bus system, as we talked about with OCTA, they're not paying in to help Santa Ana fix all its roads. It's the same thing, and so we're looking at the larger context and where does equity come into play. And so I just want us to keep that in mind as we move forward, but also as well, Fred, just trying to figure out how much do we do purchase online? It just, it's just interest, it's just an interesting fact that I would like to know.
Okay, great. Thank you. And the only comment I have on a lighter note is to introduce our new council liaison, Julie Castro-Cardenas. Welcome. Thank you for being here and joining us, and I'm not sure if you met the councilwoman, but she's...
I know Julie well.
All right. Okay, so welcome aboard. And with that, if there's no comments from staff or anybody else, I think we're adjourned.